Twenty-eighth meeting of the Georgetown County Council. Let the record show that we do have a quorum present. We will now have the invocation by Council Reverend Ernie Cooper, Senior.
Father, together to gather our county council session today. We ask that you would be in our midst. We ask for your guardians. We ask as we deliberate together for the cause of the community, for the cause of the county. We ask that you would give us the understanding. We invite you to be a part of our midst. We thank you at every effort that we will make tonight. We ask that we would do it that you may be given the glory. We ask tonight as we come together for the people, we ask God that you would order our steps. And even whatever decision that we make tonight, let us do it with you ordering our steps tonight. I would call it done now. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Move on down to the approval of the agenda. There's one note. Councilor Stella Mercado has disclosed a potential conflict in participating in discussion and voting. On ordinance number twenty-four dash five-seven has requested to be recused. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Morant. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, the agenda is approved. We now have special reports and presentations. We have a presentation on the fiscal year end, June thirtieth, 2025 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Ms. Karis Langston, our finance director, will be introducing our speaker, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Langston, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting that, but this is Alan Thompson, our auditor with Thompson Price, Scott Adams and company. He's going to be presenting our 2024 fiscal year audit. And I'd just like to thank all of you for your support through the year. This was a collaborative effort of finance and all the other departments in Georgetown County. They all had a big part to play in putting it together and.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
First, thank you for allowing our firm to do the audit. We appreciate it very much. The main thing that you hire us as an independent audit firm to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issue an unmodified report, which is the best report, a quote-unquote clean report. And clean in this case means there were no financial or compliance findings, which kudos to finance, management, and to you as a board for that. And to all the other department heads, as Karis said. If you'd be kind enough in your presentation summary there to turn over to page one, there's a few things I need to kind of go through. Under that qualitative aspects of accounting practices, there's three paragraphs there. There's a phrase in each one of those paragraphs. First is appropriate accounting policy, second is accounting estimates, and the third is disclosures in the financial statements are neutral, consistent, and clear. And we were good with all of those. That there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And then on page two, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated December thirtieth. Were unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. And again, there were no other findings or issues. Under other matters, it discusses that we did look at the and test some of the state retirement system reports. That we were engaged to report on the combining and individual non-major and fund statement schedules on page three. And that we were not engaged to report on the statistical section, but we did review it, et cetera. And then on page four, I guess this is all good news, both from a findings being none and from a financial numbers standpoint as well. If you look in this first column under 2024, we don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but these are definitely some of those key numbers. And what we attempt to do is put that for June thirtieth, 2024, in this first column and then put the four prior year report numbers beside that. So that you're not just looking at a number without some context. So you can see total fund balance there in your general fund at 25 million, eight hundred eighty-nine thousand. If you were to go back to 2020, you see where that number is 11.6 million. So significant growth over that time period. And your unavailable fund balance at 1.5 million committed and assigned at 292,000. And then general fund expenditures at 37.1 million. And then fund balance available as a percentage of general fund at 65.52%. The reason we show this, in another state, we do a lot of counties there, and we do three here in South Carolina. That percentage is an indication of financial strength in the general fund, which anytime you were to go borrow money, somebody somewhere who's issuing the debt is looking at that percentage. Then you see revenues over and under expenditures before transfers and contribution. The general fund had a positive 8.2 million. The ARPA money was 414,000. Law enforcement was a positive 1.4 million. Cultural and Recreation Grants Funds a positive 9.2. The Road Improvement is a positive 1.5. Debt Services 763,000. And then the Capital Improvements Plan Projects had a minus 4.8. Public Works Grant Fund was a minus million and 87,000.
Mr. Thompson, if I could interrupt you briefly. What was the negative four on the CIP project? 4.4.8?
I'd have to look, to be honest with you, and I may have to get back to get you the detail on that. If I can get back to you and give you details, I'd be happy.
Maybe Karis or Angela could jump in there.
Because we anticipate, and you can see over the five years, because when you see in the under the title, the transfers and contributions, we're anticipating there to be some losses because for all five years, you see there is a loss there. But you're getting transfers in from either the general fund or other borrowings projects, et cetera, that would reflect that capital projects.
I'm sure I asked that question last year, but it's been a year and I cannot remember what was said.
You and I are probably in the same boat on that.
It kind of sticks out like.
So the capital projects funds are more like from the CIP, which is leftover, so we've still got some expenses that are leftover. Revenues don't come in, so that that number is really the revenues that were for 24 and the expenses that were for 24 netted together. And so it's showing a negative, but we already received the revenue years ago. So if you go down to the bottom, and actually it's on page. Yeah. We that if you look at the fund balance in that fund, well, even if you take out the 61 million that we've got for the detention center that we just got this year, we still had like 10 million, almost 15 million dollars of previous revenue that was used to pay that 4 million dollars. Did that, did I say, I just heard that around and about way, but.
That's why I remember it from last year. Mr. Thompson, I had a question also going back to the fund balancer and the general fund.
Yes, sir.
And our fund balance is 65.52%, you know, and that's raised over the year, and we've talked about this before. Is that, is that normal or is that high?
Well, with the growth rate that you're experiencing, I'm not sure if there's quote-unquote normal. We with the three we're doing in in South Carolina now, what we're seeing is that the growth and a lot of it might be coming from developments, et cetera, is causing taxes to increase at a significant rate, so at some point the.
You're talking about revenue income?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's going to result in the county, over the long period of time, having to provide additional services for those folks. And so I would, I don't know if normal is a good word here as much as when you look at what you're going to, what you go through in your budget process to determine what the long-term needs are for the county, whether you would, you as a board would determine that that's significant or ample to provide the services needed. So that's a little bit of a vague answer, but at the growth rates you're having, I would say I'd be nervous about curbing it a whole lot below that for the time being, whether or not you want to curb the growth in it. Might be a challenge that y'all, y'all address at some point.
So in a rapid growth situation as we're, we're hoping for, this number you think would be accessible?
I do, yes.
It just, it just seems like it's, it's a heck of a, it's a very conservative position is what I guess I'm looking at.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
But you think we need this in this environment?
I do. You look at what we've had over the last four or five years, which would include a pandemic, which a lot of governmental funds came out. And so in some cases, I would say in 90% of the municipalities and counties that we audit, and we audit about 150, you've seen a significant increase in the general fund on most of that, most of that. And so as a result, managing the expenditure side of that going forward, after that money has came in, is going to be key to being able to maintain, in my opinion. And so I would think over the next couple of years, when that money slows down, you may have some challenges internally replacing some of that. So realize I am an auditor and an accountant, so I'm probably going to take a conservative approach to that, so take that with a grain of salt.
From a bond rating, is there a line where the bonding companies like to see municipalities or counties?
I think the main thing that they're looking for is a, is a good tax base with a good collection percentage that the general fund generates a positive number each year. And that this number here is probably, if it's significant amounts you're looking to borrow, needs to be in that 40-plus percent. And you've ratcheted that up over the last two years, so I think you're in a good spot for that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I got one, one other question on page four, Alan.
Yes, sir.
The, the Road Improvement Fund, that 1.5 million, is that revenue based off the $50 tax on vehicles? That's it?
So I'm going to continue to run then. Not sure exactly where I dropped off, but I'm going to pick up that Public Safety Grant Fund was positive 67,505. Other governmental funds at 323,000 positive. The Environmental Services was a positive 2.1 million, and the Storm Drainage Utility was a positive 345,000. You see the environmental services depreciation expense was a positive, I mean, had a depreciation expense of 1.8 million, and the depreciation expense in stormwater drainage was 724,000. You see the total fixed assets there with accumulated depreciation in cash and utility funds. What you're really looking for there is positive cash flow excluding debt. And then you see the cash and fund balances. I hate to just read all these numbers out, but what you can generally see there is positive cash flow. Your ARPA money is going to go down because you want to be expending those resources before a deadline kicks in. So other than that, it looks overall pretty strong. We looked at the fund balances in the general fund earlier, but then you can see where the Rescue Fund is 852,000, then law enforcement 3.4, and then on down the list there. And we'll look at total cash and fund balances here in just a moment. On page five.
Quick question on, this might be for Karis. For CPST, will there be a different bucket versus CIP? For the capital project sales tax, will that be under a new line item or will that stay under CIP?
We're, we're still trying to work our way through how we're going to record the capital project sales tax, considering that we have outside agencies that are also going to be involved in that. I think our plan right now is to treat it like a grant fund, so there will be a separate fund for it, and it will be recorded separately. Now, when we get ready to do the financial statements, it will go under the capital project sales, or the capital projects funds.
It'll stay in that same.
It'll stay in that, it'll be all lumped together in that fund.
Okay.
Our portion of it, but.
The, not the other agencies.
Won't be reported in our audit because it's not, it's passed through money.
Right, okay.
It'll be reported in the fiscal section of the document.
Okay, thank you.
You see on page five, those first few lines there talking about the, the tax rates, the collection percentage at 97.44%. And then the assessed value and the levy amount at 56 million, 836 dollars. And you see the total debt there being 119 million dollars and a breakdown by each type of debt, if you will, being governmental debt at 116 million and business-type debt at 3.5 million. And you see a breakdown of your general fund revenues by department, along with general fund expenditures by department, with total general fund revenue being 39,506,000, and total expenditures being 31,293,000. And then on all of those, as you, we talked about earlier, you can see the four prior years and get a comparison there of the total revenues and expenditures. On page six, you can see the blue being total fund balance and the red, if you will, the unavailable fund balance. You can see a nice trend there in your total fund balance. The same thing holds true on the bottom with the analysis of fund balance available as a percentage, going from 31.29% up to 65.52%. And then on the page eight, you can, I'm sorry, little fingers are sticking together. Page seven, where I was saying earlier, we'd take a look at total cash balances and total fund balances. You can see cash and fund balances in pie charts at the top, but total cash balances being 204 million and total fund balances being 212 million. And then on page eight, you can see the collection percentage by year there, going from 98.07 to 97.44%. And then on the bottom, you see in a pie chart, governmental debt, as we discussed, being by far the largest of the pie at 97% and the business type being 3%. And you see a breakdown of your revenue and expenditures by percentage on page nine. And you see the reason we talk so much about property taxes at 60% of your general fund revenue. General government being the largest expenditure along with cultural and recreation and public safety. Again, from, from our standpoint, from an independent. Again, from, from our standpoint, from a independent audit standpoint, what you're really looking to us for is an opinion on the financial statements that includes financial and compliance, and we were good with both of those. So I, I would again say congratulations to everybody on that. Unfortunately, we, we don't issue a whole lot of financial statements that don't have a finding or comment somewhere, so, uh, good job for everybody here. But that, I'm happy to answer any questions, not just tonight and here, but anytime you got a question, please feel free to give me a call. If I happen not to be in the office, ask for my cell number, I'll get you an answer to your question. And again, thank you for allowing us to do the audit.
I have one, one other question, Mr. Chairman. Um, Alan, I'm not sure if you can answer this, I didn't see the, any of the numbers, but we're showing a, a revenue increase of about 20.07 or 20.7%. 23 versus 24 for the fiscal year. What, what is the normal, what is the norm that you see for counties of our size percentage-wise? That's, that's pretty big. We've never experienced anything like that in quite a while, not my, not since my tenure being here anyway.
Again, uh, "normal" gets hard to, to define there. I would say, you know, like for Berkeley, that's probably very similar. We also do a county right across the state line in North Carolina, Brunswick, and that's probably right in line, uh, with their growth rate as well. A lot of people are loving the coast in, in our two states, so, uh, it's, uh, creating some significant revenue increases.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments or questions from Mr. Alan? Thank you, sir, we appreciate it, all your hard work. Ms. Langston, thank you, and your department and everyone in Georgetown County for everything they do.
Thanks.
You guys did a fantastic job, and we appreciate it. We'll move on now to public comment section. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes, and no speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address counsel during the public input period should sign up with the clerk or counsel before the meeting is called to order. Are there any speakers, Ms. Alma?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have 12 speakers signed up tonight, and as you stated, each will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Reverend Justin Gamble.
Mr. Chairman and to this board, it gives me an interesting opportunity to have this privilege to stand before you to speak on a very interesting subject concerning a parcel of land there in the Brown's Ferry community. I made sure to highlight that word "community" because that's what it is, a community. Community of people who have worked tirelessly to build what they have, sacrificed so much so that they can enjoy the life that they have now. Today, I'm disturbed because we're having a discussion about essentially almost destroying the community. I'm interested in this conversation because the community is built upon family. And as you can see, family is well represented in this room tonight. Family has came out, sacrificed their time, because there's just an interesting way to say that what's being proposed is something we just don't agree with. As you know, Brown's Ferry is a beautiful community, and I understand change is something we all, uh, must become accustomed to. But when this particular change has the tendency, the urgency to maybe destroy a community, destroy a family, then we have some problems. We have something that we need to say. And so I ask of this particular board that you would really meditate on this decision that you have before you. We're not against, we're not against, uh, business opportunities, we're not against change, we're not against growth. We're just saying our backyard isn't the playground for that. We have people in our community who are dealing with illnesses, who need comfort, who need care. We have people who have children where traffic is already high, and now that could cause traffic to grow even more. And so I ask of you, please, 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 please understand where we are coming from when it comes to our community that's built upon the foundation of a family. Thank you so much.
Reverend Michael Burgess.
Let me say first and foremost, um, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak to this body, to the council man and councilwoman of this Georgetown County. Don't want to be redundant about what Pastor Gamble said, but I wanted to let it be known that we are here for the people of the community. We do understand that we appreciate the potential for economic growth, but we are just totally against what is trying to be put in that community. I don't know if you've traveled Highway 51, it is a narrow road, um, it has been so many accidents on Highway 51, and by allowing this to take place in the community, it's just gonna make it even more congested. Um, I want you all to be prayerful about the decision that you're going to make about this. Consider what is at hand, the lives of the people and the traffic that's gonna be coming to and fro in that area. We want you to know that we will support something else, but not this project. So we ask that you please consider looking at something else. Thank you so very much.
Reverend Harry Lee.
Thank you for this opportunity to come and speak before you, uh, with this issue. Um, the gentleman that's proposing, he's a businessman, and there is nothing wrong wanting to establish a business in a particular area. There's nothing wrong with that. But I come to you tonight, uh, board women, board chairman, and as the business owner that's proposing, I come to you tonight on the basis of humanity. There's nothing wrong with, uh, moving into a neighborhood, and I move into your neighborhood and I become disrespectful to the violent, to the ordinance or the rules of the neighborhood, and begin to, to create interruptions. The first thing you're going to do is you're going to look for some way how to enforce what's already been instated, because respect goes a long way. And I'm sure the gentleman, the fact that he's a business person means he's a reasonable person, and that's good. In order to stay in business, you have to be reasonable. But I come to you tonight on the predication of respect. When you, you to pretend to, uh, propose to move into a neighborhood and, uh, the community comes out in disagreement, that is letting you know how they feel about where you're coming into. Now, to drive on and to push on and to override their outpour of saying, "We don't want you," to me, that falls into very disrespectful, because after all, he tends or you tend to move into that neighborhood. And if anybody moving to anybody neighborhoods, you want to be welcomed, and you want to be accepted. But when the people in the community voice their opinion, say, "We just don't want to be accepted to that," to override anything that they want is very disrespectful. And after all, you're moving into a community, and nothing else, as a business person, you want to be able to work with the community. You don't want the community working against you, because after all, they're your eyes and they're your ears. But if you disrespect me, how can I be, we want to help you, or what's going on? So all I ask tonight is to have a level of humanity to respect one another's decision. We don't have to agree because everybody has their own ideal and their own agenda, but there is a, a thing called respect. And they've been coming here for the past seven meetings, showing how they feel, and to overlook all their determination appearance shows a lack of respect to go against what their desires are for that community. Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir.
Kennedy Johnson.
Good afternoon, County Council Chair, Mr. Elliott, Vice Chair, Ms. Mercado, I will not pronounce your name right, members of County Council, again, my name is Kennedy Johnson. As I sat there, I thought about something that my father taught me a long time ago, that was always try to do the right thing. One of the right things we're trying to do is keep our village a village, because that's what it is. Keep our village what it's been designed to be, VR10 residential. Here we asking, you're asking to put a resort commercial district in the middle of a village residential area. That's not right. Like the pastor said, we've been here seven times, we've attended seven meetings with this. Twice, you know, the planning commission has denied it. Once, it was four to one deny. Second one was five to zero deny. We feel we want to accept the recommendation of the planning commission. And like I said, this is, this is the community. We're here because we care. We're here, why? Because we've got to live with whatever comes there. No respect to Mr. Thomas, but he comes and goes, sit down now. We have to stay. We have to deal with this on a daily basis. Don't make us suffer for someone else's mistake. If this is, if this request is approved, Pandora's box will be opened. What's coming next? We have no idea, we have no say. So, you know, all of the business that's there right now fell within the VR10 residential code. The business that Mr. Thomas bought, that was a VR10 business. All other businesses, everyone fell within the rules and regulations that was there. And all we asking you to do is keep it that way. Uh, the business that was there was, obviously was not sold for a long time, and the reason why is because I'm sure whoever went to take a look at that building, what did they see? They saw it was this restriction VR10, so they moved on. The records would show Mr. Thomas unknowingly purchased the business, knowing, not knowing what it, what it was, what it was entailed. Is that our fault? It's not our fault he didn't do his homework. That's not us. Why make us have to deal and suffer with that because someone else was wrong? That's not fair. Resort Commercial District is a designated area within the community typically near tourist attractions, mountains, where zoning laws as a mixed commercial business primary focus. Tourist attraction, Brown's Ferry is not a tourist attraction. Farmers, we have other folks that live there, senior citizens, that's not tourist. All we asking you to do is please keep our business, keep our, our residential area the same. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Andy Roberts.
Good evening. My name's Andy Roberts. I'm a 44-year resident of the Brown's Ferry community. Nearly every day, I pass by the empty building that Mr. Thomas is wanting to repurpose as a boating supply and repair shop. In the community, there's an ice cream shop, a convenience store, a liquor store, Brown's Ferry Elementary School, Dollar General, they're all within a quarter mile of each other. You can stand in the road and look and see them all. This business, this business will, will benefit not only Brown's Ferry community, but the entire Georgetown and neighboring counties, with the boaters going to and from Brown's Ferry boat landing. The steel mills closed, the International Paper recently closed, loose with the loss of 750 jobs in county. I'd like to think the County Council would approve Mr. Thomas's requests resulting in employees being hired, taxes paid, insurance, and et cetera, that you'd need running a business. Thank you.
Dan Stacey.
Good evening, I'll be the fastest. I'm here for third reading, item 6B, if you have questions after Holly gives her presentation. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight, um, and representing Lee Thomas. I actually, I mean, lived in Georgetown County for 20 years and am a school teacher and was a school teacher for 21 years, and I'm in real estate, and, um, my brokerage did call the county to find out if Lee Thomas could change this piece of property to, to commercial, and we were told yes, and unfortunately, the person that has told us has currently lost his job with the county, but we did do our due diligence and we did call. Um, that, 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 that is absolutely true. Um, and with this area, um, being surrounded by rivers and coastal areas, and just what I've seen in the public school system with children needing to learn, being more on boats, needing to learn the safety and everything else, I think that this business will help, will help with local air, the local community with jobs, bringing diverse services and different, you know, materials companies coming together, which strengthen the communities, bringing communities together, working together, creating jobs. He's already, um, made multiple improvements, and I just feel like it's a very positive, um, way to bring us together rather than separate us. There's enough separation going on, so I feel like this is a good opportunity for people to grow and be supportive of one another.
Uh, thank you again for allowing me a moment to speak on the half of Mr. Thomas. Uh, my opinion may not be very popular this evening because I'm an outsider, uh, but however, I am a retired military veteran. I served in the military and the army for 25 years, recently retired and gen, still now currently work, uh, at the United States Postal Service, uh, and that's where I met, uh, Mr. Thomas almost two years ago and a friend of his, Jerry, almost five years ago. Uh, and having, has traveled extensively in the military, I simply say this, and I too, uh, also, I, I pastor a church in Green Sea, South Carolina. Uh, and well, I, I simply say this, as a young man growing up, I was raised with, by two principles, treat everybody with respect, treat everybody where you want to be treated, and don't judge anybody until you know them. I believe Mr. Thomas is a great young man, and if you get to know him, give him the opportunity, he may prove some of your thoughts differently. I just asked the council to give him a fair chance, don't judge him until you know him, and he may be a benefit to this community. Thank you for your time.
My name is Brett Alman. I've been a local here for many years. I've known Lee for about 10 to 15 years. He's a great, a great man, a good family man. He's had the opportunity to open a shop that will better the people of the surrounding areas. And any business that, that is acquired to help the people to do a better product, it's great for the, the, the community. I used to sit there and I said, "I can't imagine that this would be denied to have such a great person in this area to help the economy." Thank you.
Clarissa Tolbert. Clarissa Tolbert.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, but if you don't mind, these are the people I'd like to speak to. I moved next door to his business two years ago. Didn't have any idea what I was in for, but I moved in. The Thomas family's very nice. They're very respectful, great people.
Ms. Tolbert, Ms. Tolbert, please, please address the council.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, I've lived next door to them for two years and I've not had any problem with any of the traffic. I've not had a problem with the noise or anything. They've just, they're great people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Lee Thomas.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for you. We are a family-owned business. We want to rezone the property from VR10 to resort commercial. We previously come before you to change it to general commercial. We withdrew that because that would be harmful for the community. With changing it to resort commercial would be more beneficial to the community. With opening this business here, we want to support the community, support other local businesses, churches, sponsor events and functions for students and, and schools. As far as our property, we don't plan to build infrastructures or anything. We want to use the property as it is. Just cut the grass, make it presentable, keep it presentable. In fact, since we've owned the business, we've contacted DOT. They've cleaned out the ditch. There was an overgrown in front of us. We currently have it looking a lot nicer than it was. You know, our, our business won't impact the infrastructure that's there. It won't impede on the traffic. We don't impede on the traffic now. Upon, upon starting this whole process, I mean, we've spoke to a lot of locals around the area as far as next door, right beside them, beside others, even reached out and further out. There's a lot of, a lot of people that are in support of this business. There's, there's others that are not in support of it, but we, we want to encourage them to come and get to know us. If they come and get to know us, they'll find out we're different than what they think we are. We appreciate your time and I'll be here for any questions that y'all may have regarding the property or anything.
Sophie Jackson.
It's Sophia Jackson. Thank you, lady and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm a member of or resident of the Ola community. And I think I speak for myself as well as all of the residents of the greater Brown Ferry community when I say that this subject that we're dealing with, this isn't an issue of your personal character. We're not here to judge who you are as a person. But what we're here to do is to put the facts on the table in regards to how this will impact our community as a whole. It's not us saying we don't want you there because we don't want your presence there. We are saying that we don't want any changes to us that's going to cause us to be at demise in the end. The great philosopher George Santayana said, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." And with that being said, let us look to the many instances of those who have had their land proverbially taken away from them from these same types of business endeavors. Okay? So for you, it's a business endeavor. For us, it's a legacy. For us, it means impeding on our history. For us, it means that you're changing many things that we're not at the point that we are ready to change, not for someone who is not a part of us. If it's going to be changed, it's going to be changed because we want to change it. And I know people don't want to say that, but that's where we are. Most of the property that is in the Brown's Ferry area is Aaron's property. This is property that our families worked hard for. Some of them, I'm learning over the weekend, even died for. So that's not something that we're willing to relinquish without a fight. So again, we want you to understand that it's not a personal vendetta that we have against you, but it is us protecting our legacy and protecting what we have to hold on to for the generations to come. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who spoke on behalf of each of their own opinions. We'll move on down to the third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-56 to rezon one parcel totaling approximately 1.2 acres located on 11732 Gapway Road at the intersection of Punchion Creek Drive, TMS number 02-0416-003-0000 from forest agriculture to one-half acre residential. Ms. Holly Richardson, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening. This parcel is located on the north side of Gapway Road. It has a primary residential structure, an accessory dwelling unit, and a storage barn on the site. The applicant has owned this property for about 11 years and he's proposing to rezon it to R1/2 in order to be able to subdivide the parcel into two separate lots. The future land use map designates this property along with the surrounding properties as rural residential or RR. This designation does allow for the low-density type residential that's being proposed here and how the site is currently being used. And staff felt that an amendment to the future land use map was not necessary to facilitate the request. The planning commission held a public hearing back in November on this and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval for the rezoning. We haven't had any changes since. We discussed this at second reading a couple of weeks ago, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
I have a question. Holly, refresh my memory now. Was this the one where we were looking at the utilities, septic systems and water and...
Yes.
Where, where did we get to with that? Was, was it okay in the end? I guess I can, you know, speed up the process. There were no issues there?
I think it's understanding that the neighbor did lodge a complaint with the, what used to be Department of Environmental Services. They came out and investigated the reports in your packet that they didn't find a violation there. The applicant, if he is adding an additional dwelling, will need to either verify that he has a septic tank appropriate for the use or that sewer is available, which would have to be from the town of Andrews.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is this tract adjacent to 7A, 7B?
It is also on Punchin Creek Drive. This one is more near to, right near the intersection with Gapway Road.
Okay.
This one is on the intersection, Ms. Holly?
Yes, that's right, on the corner.
The other ones are further down the road.
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there any further questions? I'll now call for a motion on the ordinance 24-56.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we approve ordinance number 24-56.
Motion was made by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilor Anderson. Or is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Moving on down to ordinance number 24-57 to amend the Polys Island Business Commons Plan Development located at 1067 Pettigrew Drive in Polys Island, TMS number 04-02-03-189-0000 in Council District Number Six. We have a request from Councilor Mercado to recuse herself, so we'll pause so she can leave the room. The record shows Councilor Mercado has recused herself and will not be a part of this discussion or voting. Ms. Richardson, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. As you said, this is a request to amend the Polys Island Business Commons Plan Development, more specifically parcel two of this PD. And the request here is to allow for multiple food vendors on the site. Actually, the application states up to three specific vendors. The, a change of tenant and two building permits were issued for this site back in November of '22 to renovate the existing building on site to a restaurant or brewery. Those renovations are now complete and the site is currently operating. The only request before us here, like I said, is to allow for multiple food vendors. We do allow for one vendor per site, but this is a specific request to allow more than one at a time. And like I said, the applicant specifically asked for up to three vendors. The planning commission held a public hearing back in November. There was no one that spoke at the meeting and the commission recommended unanimously for approval. We haven't had any changes since second reading. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Holly? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion now.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We'll move on down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 25-01, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map regarding approximately 26.01 acres of Punchion Creek Drive identified as TMS number 02-0414-023-0700 from employment to rural residential, is in Council District Number Five. Ms. Richardson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, as we've done in the past, items 7A and 7B relate to the same parcel, so I will go over those two together. As you said, this is a request to rezon 26 acres from heavy industrial or HI to forest agriculture, FA. This property is, as Councilmember Mercado said, in the vicinity of the previous request, this is on the eastern side of Punchin Creek Drive. This parcel is currently vacant and the applicant has asked to rezon the property to FA in order to allow for subdivision of the parcel into two large residential estate lots. The HI zoning for the property today does not allow for residential uses unless it is a caretaker dwelling for an approved industrial use, but you cannot construct a single-family dwelling as a principal use in the HI district. At 26 acres, the parcel does have sufficient area for a proposed subdivision under the FA zoning district. There is, as you can see on the zoning map, other FA zone property immediately adjacent to this one to the south and the east. Before development, they would of course need to demonstrate access to water and sewer or septic tank for the site. Water in this area is provided by the Georgetown County Water and Sewer District, and it is likely they would need a septic tank approval from SEDES. Punchin Creek Drive is a DOT road. Any development there, we need an encroachment permit from their office. The future land use map designates this property as employment. All the surrounding properties are either designated as employment or rural residential. The employment designation does not allow for single-family residential, so we are recommending an amendment to the map to facilitate this request. The planning commission held a public hearing. There was only one person who spoke. She basically had a question about access for the site. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval. They also recommended approval to amend the future land use map from employment to RR to support the rezoning request. And that is your ordinance 2501. Like I said, I think that covers 7A and 7B, and I'll be glad to answer questions for either.
Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson on ordinance 25-01 or 25-02?
Ms. Holly, the, the FA designation, that will be one residence per acre or one-half acre?
One residence per acre.
Per acre for the, for the 26?
Yes, sir. And the applicant has expressed his intent to only have two lots there, but it would allow for one acre parcels.
And, and do you know that if the town public service sewer system reaches that far?
I do not. I would think not because it was kind of questionable for the other piece right there at the corner, so it would be hard to imagine they would go further. Is it closer?
Yeah, it's very close if it's not. Very beautiful piece of land.
Mr. McCants says it's not.
Holly, what did you say the RR DUIA is again? Sorry.
RR is low residential.
So what, how many units per acre?
It's usually, it's less than one technically.
Less than one?
Mm-hmm.
And do we have a, just wondering about the FA part. Do we have a zoning that's not FA that would be one per acre?
The only thing we have right now is an R5, which is pretty much limited to the historic Plannersville area. I think that is something we're going to need to look at with our zoning rewrite that we're going to talk about soon. But I think there is a need for that based on that RR type. That's kind of a new place type, frankly.
So FA is the best fit for now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Richardson? Okay, well, Tadies Two, separate. On ordinance 2501, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we approve ordinance number 25-01.
Motion's made by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to ordinance number 2502. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So a motion, a motion by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Move on down to ordinance number 25-03 to rezon one parcel totaling approximately 2.92 acres located on 7914 Brown's Ferry Road identified as TMS number 02-0405-022-0600 from Village 10,000 square feet residential or VR10 to residential commercial, and this is in Council District Seven. Ms. Richardson, you have the floor.
Thank you. This parcel is located on the north side of Brown's Ferry Road between Lorena and Rosa Susan Drives. Parcel's mostly cleared, vacant land. It does have a small commercial structure on site and the property owner recently fenced the property. The request here is to rezon to RC or Resort Commercial to allow for a boat supply, service, and storage facility that would be called Thomas Marine. The current zoning is VR10 or Village Residential 10,000 square feet. It is similar to the R10 and the MR10 districts, which are basically neighborhood districts. VR10 does though allow for some other retail stores and several commercial businesses, including barber shops, laundromats, daycares, public buildings, timber production, and some limited restaurants. However, marine-related uses are not listed in the VR10 district. So Mr. Thomas brought this rezoning request before you. He originally did ask for general commercial. That request was heard by the planning commission back in September. Planning commission voted four to one to recommend denial for the rezoning request to GC. The rezoning went through second reading and it was then withdrawn by the applicant so that he could come back and ask for resort commercial instead. We then had to re-advertise for resort commercial. Public noticed that request and send that back to the planning commission, and that brought us basically where we are here today. The major difference between the general commercial district and the resort commercial district is resort commercial does limit some of the uses in general commercials such as gas stations or convenience stores, drive-in restaurants, and banks, things that could potentially have more traffic associated with them. General commercial is more of a highway commercial zoning. General commercial is more of a highway commercial zoning. The parcel here contains 2.92 acres. It does have sufficient land area for the proposed RC zoning district. So we don't feel that it could be considered spot zoning based on its size. As I said, there is already a commercial building on the site with a parking lot, a good bit of vacant open space for the new commercial business. The current structure does meet the resort commercial setbacks. Water and sewer are available to the site. Water is provided by Browns Ferry Water, and the Georgetown County Water and Sewer District handles the sewer. Highway 51 or Browns Ferry Road is, of course, a DOT road. Any encroachments there would need to be handled by that office. The surrounding properties in terms of zoning, they're all zoned VR10 or forest and agriculture. There is, if you look at the zoning map, some neighborhood commercial zoning, a strip of that on both sides of Browns Ferry Road, about 425 feet to the southeast. Further, there is some general commercial zoning further to the southeast, and that's at the intersection of Johnson and Dunbar Roads, and that's where the school is there. I think there's a gas station there, a tire facility. Most of the immediately surrounding uses are rural, single-family residential, which you can see from the aerial map. Our future land use map designates this property along with the surrounding properties as rural village or RV. This designation allows for low to medium density residential, but it may also include some local serving businesses, institutional or community uses, and other uses in support of rural activities. There is also a village center place type in the near vicinity to this lot. Staff does feel that this could be considered a local serving business that supports rural activities, so we do not recommend an amendment to the future land use map for this request. There are no wetlands or flood zones located on the property. Buffers would be required in areas where the commercial development abuts single-family residential. That's a level three buffer, which ranges from 15 feet to 30 feet in width with about 22 trees to be planted every 100 feet. Highway 51 is, of course, a major thoroughfare with an existing gas station, a Dollar General, as I said, located further down Browns Ferry Road. Also, the Black River is located just under two miles from this site. The Planning Commission held a second public hearing on the resort commercial request at their December meeting. There were representatives of the community that spoke in opposition with their concerns about increased car and boat traffic noise and their desire to maintain the VR10 zoning for the area. The applicant was also at the meeting, responded that he would make safety a main priority and had respect for the community. At that meeting, the Planning Commission did recommend five to zero to deny the proposed rezoning request. And that's what I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions.
Mr. Anderson.
This is interesting. So let me go back again so I make sure I understand. This thing has been village residential since 2008 when we initially zoned everything out there in that area?
That is correct. Prior to 2008, it was not zoned. It was unzoned.
So it's been that way since that time, and the only, as far as what's other than residential there, you mentioned barber shops, beauty shops, restaurants, and then you said something about timber. Now, what is, how does that, how does that fold into that?
Commercial production and harvesting of timber and any activities normally associated with such operation is listed as a permitted use in VR10.
So you're talking about tree farming, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's certainly not that. So, and then it was mentioned that down the road, there are other parcels that are zoned differently where we've got gas stations and some other things, but it didn't include specifically a boat repair place or anything, correct?
I think that the GC district, which is located further south on Browns Ferry Road near that intersection, would allow for what Mr. Thomas has requested.
How far down is that? Is that like a half a mile or?
I think so, yes.
Now, this piece of property, how, do we know how long it was on the market before Mr. Thomas purchased it?
No, sir, I did not.
Anybody out there can answer that question? Is there a realtor there?
Let me think about that. Hold on a minute. Let me think about this. It's on the market for a little while. Maybe a year. I don't know if they've had a chance.
Okay. Ma'am, are you the realtor?
Yes.
Okay. So would you think less than a year or more than a year? And bear with me here, I'm trying to put this together.
Yes, sir, I understand that, and I would have to check with my broker. My broker and I worked on this together, but I do, I know it was on the market for a little while, a year, I'm guessing, but I would have, I would have to look into that.
Okay, well, we'll stay, well, I'll go with a year. And so you, did you have this property on the market yourself the entire time?
My broker did, and I'm on a team, so we work together, and he had a meeting tonight, so that's why I'm here.
I see. So having said that, you also mentioned that you had called Ms. Richardson's office to find out, what was it, if you could change?
We called to see if we could be zoned for commercial, and we were told it could be.
Okay, that the property could be, but that'd be a rezoning?
Yes, sir. If it was, yeah, that was it, yes, sir.
Well, and I understand that. I think, you know, if you asked that question, I'd have to say, yeah, anything can be rezoned if you can get it rezoned. So, but did your, did Mr. Thomas understand what it was zoned for when he purchased it?
We, when we were shopping for, when we were representing him, that's what we asked for. We, with the intent of what he, his business that is, that he has now, that, right, Mr. Thomas? That's what we, that's how we worded it in order for him to...
Okay, so he understood from the beginning that he was, he was taking, he was gambling on whether or not he could get this rezoned. He was fully aware of that?
Before we moved forward, we were told yes. Before we, before he purchased it and we moved forward, we did look into it and called the county, yes, sir.
Right, but you called just to see if it was possible to rezon it?
For commercial.
For commercial, right, and that's where we are now. So we're, you're asking us to make the decision as to whether or not this gentleman who's paid good money for this piece of property is basically, and these are my words, rolling the dice up here with seven votes as to whether he can go through with this. I just, I hate to see him in that position personally, but if he's, if he, if he went, if he's gone here with full knowledge of this piece of property that's been there since 2008 and been used for what it was zoned for, and decided to take the chance on, on changing the zoning to general commercial, but the best we could do, or the county could do for you was to go to this, what is it, resort, resort, what was it, Holly? Resort residential? Right, which would allow him to do this. So that's, that's what my task is, is decide whether or not he can do this, and, and he understood what the situation was. I just, I'm just, what I'm struggling with here is that if, if I vote one way, he's going to be out of luck and holding a piece of property that he's not going to be able to use for the intended purposes. Is that true?
Right. If this zoning doesn't go through or another zoning that allows for the boat repair, he will not be able to fix that type of business at this particular location.
Well, as long as he was of sound mind and is ready to, is ready to put his faith in, in seven votes up here, then I guess I've asked all the questions I needed to ask.
Go ahead. What was yours?
My concern, my question.
We'll give you a mic then.
My question is that you made mention that the possibility that it could be rezoned, you made the call, or you made a call, someone made a call, that it could be rezoned, but was it stated at that time that it could be, it will be something optimistic?
Yeah. With my broker, like, I mean, I'm here representing him, and that's the frustrating thing for me right now, but we, we made the call together, and that was it. Yes, he will be able to have this business, this is, in this particular area. That's what we were told. So that's why I'm saying, we looked into it. We, we called, we did our due diligence. We didn't just say, tell him, you know, off the top of my head, you're going to be able to do this. So we looked into it. We were told by the county that this would be something that could happen for him. It's the county, it's somebody in his office. It's somebody that works in the office. I know who we spoke to. I know the name of the person.
Mr. Chairman, since the realtor has opted to respond to the council's question, I have a few questions for you.
Okay, Counselor Marit.
Let me ask you, you all entered into, you all wrote a contract up for Mr. Thomas, did you not, a sales contract to purchase the property?
Yes.
Did you discuss anything about a contingency being placed in that particular contract in case this property is not rezoned?
I, I'm not sure if we, I'd have to look back at that off the top of my head.
Well, even, even if you were to have communication with the county, and there is no certainty what council would do, wouldn't it have been feasible to put a contingency in the contract for Mr. Thomas to protect him?
I can't argue with that.
But you all did not, you all did not do that?
Um...
Well, did you all inform him of that?
Of the contingency?
Yes, the possibility of a contingency being placed there.
I mean, I'd have to talk to my broker. I really will, I would have to. I'm, I'm, I'm part of a team, and so I'd have to, I would have to pull that up.
Which side of the sale did you represent? Did you represent the owner or the potential purchaser?
I represented.
You represented the buyer?
Yes.
And do you think that you performed due diligence towards the buyer?
I, I do, I do. When we called the county to see if he could potentially have his business there, I truly do, and the county says this is something that they can do, that he could do.
Yes, the county is saying he could petition to have it rezoned, and as Mr. Anderson said, you're looking at putting that trust in seven members here, whether they would rezon the property for your client.
I understand. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple for Ms. Holly.
Counselor Newton, you have the floor.
It's zone VR10, and you said the logging operation could take place under VR10?
Yes.
Now, knowing what most logging operations look like and what they go through, maintenance, washing of vehicles, movement of tractors and trailers, it seems like we might need to take a look, another look at doing a rewrite on some other ordinances, because this is a much, to me, this is a much smaller footprint and traffic problem, noise problem, everything else you could think of compared to a logging operation.
Understood, definitely.
I mean, it doesn't, do you see where I'm coming from? It doesn't make sense.
I think that this logging is listed specifically here because the VR10 district was specifically created in 2008 for the rural areas, and that was frankly a concern when we were zoning those areas for the first time, that the timber industry be protected. There was some concern from them about zoning for the first time in areas that weren't zoned before, so it's been a while, but I do think that's why it is specifically listed. And to be honest with you, timbering does have an exemption in state law, so even particularly in a zoning district where it may not be listed, if it is following their best practices and meets those requirements, it's my understanding that we can't over, we can't regulate that beyond what the state law permits. But I do think it was listed here because of those concerns back at that time.
Thank you. I've got, that begs the question again, I mentioned, what I was thinking, Raymond, was we're talking about a tree farm, growing trees, not necessarily a maintenance shop for logging. That's, that's, is that, is there a way we can clarify that, or you don't know how to clarify that?
Well, it says, "commercial production and harvesting of the timber and any activities normally associated with such operation."
So that could be all the above?
Potentially.
Okay. So if Mr. Thomas wanted to go into a logging operations, he wouldn't even need to come in front of us. That's true. I would agree with that. But that's not his modus operandi.
Any further discussion?
I guess we just at the question points for Ms. Holly. I think we just at the, we haven't gotten to discussion point yet, I guess.
All right. Any further questions for Ms. Richardson? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion on ordinance 2503.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Newton has called, has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor McCotto. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marit.
As you know, this property is located in District Seven, and thanks also, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to, to address the council here. Now, I've canvassed that community many times and written down Highway 51 and seen this particular location, and, you know, it's really a quiet community, and it's a neighborhood as the, all the members have stated, all those have spoken on behalf of Brown Ferry Community. You know, what bothered me with this particular property is the initiation of the sale of the property and its being on the market with such a period of time. And when you look at the letter, which came from the realtor per se, basically, he talks about a short sale, inability to get a short sale and all that kind of thing. So you're looking at a realtor who really, whether they, whether they did due diligence to their particular client to inform them as to what was occurring, and that, that in actuality, what he was seeking could not occur in that particular tract of property. Yet they did not provide any type of contingencies for him, and now you're asking the community to bail him out in some respect to, to decimate their particular community to benefit their mistake per se. Now, we're talking about rezoning the property, and when looking at the applicant, you're talking about rezoning to use property for boat sales and service. Now, there have been some other comments being made here for other purposes, but the application basically says it's rezoning to use property for boat sales and service. So you're talking about a boat sales shop within the community. You know, you've had several people from the community to speak this evening, and I have some comments here. It says, you know, "We have a concerned community here this evening, a community whose fabric is woven and lives are entrenched in their community. This is a community with whom the county, along with its planning commission, met in their community several times to come up with a zoning plan on how they desire their community to be." Now, there's been some talk on that about this community being zoned in 2008, and prior to that time, no zoning existed there. So the county got together with its planning commission and the community to try to come up with a decision as to how their community should be zoned. They agreed, and this community relied upon that agreement. They developed their community accordingly, allowing ancillary use and determining where commercialisms should occur. Our planning commission understood this and denied this rezoning request. It is not compatible in this area of this community. The ordinance as written does not allow it. Our planning commission listened and understood the community's cry. They then sent it to us, recommending that we too hear the community's cry. They actually, we understand the community's concern and denied the rezoning request also. Are we going to take heed to... Are we going to take heed to our planning commission? We have had situations which requested storage in other areas. We didn't hesitate to not rezon at that community's request. We have requests to rezon for cemetery use. Knowing that would not pose loud noise or any type of disturbances at all hours, we denied them at the community's request because of incompatibility with the community's use. In zoning this area, the county, along with the community, set out space less than two thirds miles away, which would accommodate this request. There are several tracts zoned, general commercial, which would accommodate this request. There's, and traveling down Highway 51, I even, I even saw the sale sign on those particular commercial tract, which is not far from this particular one, but it's in a commercial zoning area. And let me be clear, my comments are not about Mr. Thomas. I do not know him, he appears to be a fine gentleman, but this is not about Mr. Thomas per se, this is about the community and what is right. Just a little due diligence for those who assisted him in executing the transaction could have possibly avoided this conference Mr. Thomas is presently experiencing. Again, this is not about Mr. Thomas. This is more about this council possibly reneging on written agreements with communication when the community comes out and says, "We do not want this changed. It is not compatible with our neighborhood, it is not conducive with our county's ordinance." We're talking about Resort Commercial District, and basically it says, "The purposes of the Resort Commercial District are to create and protect areas wherein compatible residential, recreational, and commercial uses may be established and maintained on a sound basis. Standards are so designed as to encourage both seasonal and permanent occupancy of dwellings within the district. It is intended to permit district to permit commercial activities such as marinas, boat service stations, restaurants, and other selected retail establishments, which are compatible with resort-oriented residential and recreational development. To encourage the discontinuance of non-conforming uses and prohibit any use that would substantially interfere with the development or continuation of resort-oriented commercial establishments or recreational and residential structures in the district." I don't know when Brown's Ferry became resort-oriented community. There are no Airbnbs in Brown's Ferry, to my knowledge, there are no Airbnbs there. Are we going to ignore this and begin setting new precedents? Depleting land set aside for medium-density residential neighborhoods? Let us focus on preserving the integrity, heritage, and natural beauty of that community. The neighbors desire to protect and nurture the place they call home, ensuring it remains vibrant, harmonious neighborhood for generations to come. My fellow council members, I ask that this council follow the recommendation of our planning commission and vote no on this particular request. We appointed those members to the planning commission, they reviewed it, they've made a recommendation to us twice, and are we going to ignore both of their recommendations? It's just not compatible with the VR-10 district for this business, commercial business, to be situated there. It sits smack in the middle of residential neighborhood and where residences are beginning to move back in and they have built their homes there. There's already a fence around their particular community that they did not have before, which isolates them from each other. They don't want this fencing in their communities, so we ask that we follow, or I ask on behalf of the community, to let them continue living in quietude in their particular community. Let's put items there that are compatible. Once we put it in this community, where's the next community that we're going to deal to just forget about the community's concern and do what we feel we should do, but not for the community's sake? Let's follow our planning commission's recommendation on this particular issue, and let's deny this particular request. I ask the council members to deny the particular rezoning request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Morant. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you, Counselor Morant. Your discussion was impactful.
We have a motion and a second before us on ordinance number 2503. Now we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Now we'll call for approval of the minutes, our regular council member minutes from January 14th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Counselor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further business to come for this county council today? If none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Morant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. We're adjourned.